The Liverpool City Council meeting for the 26th of June 2024 officially open. I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum session, this meeting is being livestreamed and also recording in the council chambers is not permitted. To start today's proceedings, I would like to invite Pastor Steve Rathmuir from the Cartwright Gospel Chapel, who will read the prayer of council and the affirmation and acknowledgement of country. Could I please invite everyone to please stand?
Okay, the acknowledgement of country first. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Karabraghul clan and the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrual and Darug nations. I'll read now the affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. I'll now just very briefly pray. My heavenly Father, I just thank you and I acknowledge the fact that you are the true and living God and you intervene in the affairs of men and women in this world. Lord, I just also thank you for Jesus, man's only saviour. And I just pray that today you will guide the affairs. Today, we thank you that there will be variations on opinions on all range of things, but we just pray that behind all this, you will guide this council to good and wise decisions that are for the common good of the people in this, in this city and the surrounds. Lord, I also want to pray for the families of the mayor, the councillors, and all those who support this council. And I just pray for your rich blessing upon them, and I ask this in the strong and mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, pastor, for your very kind words and prayers for all of us. It is truly greatly appreciated. Next councils, we have councillor Carnib, who is attending remotely. I'd like to move that he be accepted that way. Second to councillor Caliander, any discussion? I put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Any apologies? No apologies. Any condolences? No condolences. Next, honourable members, the confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting held on the 29th of May 2024. Move Deputy Mayor, seconded councillor Hadid. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carry. Declarations of interest? Do we have any declarations of interest? Can you turn your microphone on, please councillor Caliander?
Sure. The mayoral minute that was circulated in the addendum booklet, I believe, given that it specifically mentions advocating for the state government, obviously that, you know, there is a conflict of the two roles, therefore I will be leaving the chamber for that.
Any other further declarations? Now, I've got one declaration on plan zero four. I'll declare it as a, just to err on the side of caution, pecuniary regarding that matter. I will be leaving the chambers. Prior to my appointment as mayor, I worked as a commercial real estate agent and acted as an agent concerning that, this block and other blocks surrounding in that area in Austral. And as I said, I'll be leaving the chamber and will have no involvement in the matter. Any other further? Are there any other further declarations? Now, we'll now move into the public forum, which is on page sixty, tab one.
I have an urgency motion, Mr Mayor.
What is your urgency motion, councillor?
Yeah, the urgency motion, Mr Mayor, is a matter that I consider to be urgent because on today's agenda, there are code of meeting practice obligations on council because of legal, strategic, financial and policy implications that relates to the NOM R and that in relation to the mayor O1. In consideration of the matter possibly escalating in the Supreme Court and the recent findings of the independent investigation that have not, which have not as yet been considered by council. Council needs to confirm the council obligation in the Liverpool Council Code of Meeting Practice 2022, section three, eleven, twelve and twenty, have been met and has followed the guidelines for the appointment and oversight of the general managers, pages fifteen to seventeen. This is what makes the matter urgent.
So what is your actual?
Motion?
Yeah, what are you actually trying to move?
Okay, the motion would be that council remove at this stage item NOM R in relation to mayor one from today's agenda to enable the acting CEO time to consider the legality of the mayor one as a motion. Council's obligation, this is the motion, sir.
Yeah, but I would say that point is not, that's not legal. We have to deal with the rescission motion.
This is, this is the motion.
But we have to deal with the rescission motion.
Not, this is the urgency motion that I'm putting up.
Yeah, but your point says to not deal with the rescission motion and defer it. We have to deal with the rescission motion.
This is right as a matter of urgency, as a matter of urgency.
Yeah, but we still have to.
We have to clarify the legality of council.
We still have to deal with the rescission motion. We can't defer the rescission motion. Legally, we have to deal with it. There's been, there's been.
We can, we can pull the rescission motion.
You can't, no.
Yes, we can.
The motion, you can pull it in the motion, the substantial motion then stands.
We can withdraw the rescission motion. We can withdraw the rescission motion on the basis that we need further legal advice about where we stand as a council. Now, will I finish the motion that I was putting up?
I tell you, point one, point one is not in order. So I'm happy to hear the other points.
You haven't heard the other points.
I'm saying I'm happy to hear the other points.
So the first point would be changed then. That NOM, N O M R be, what is it when you, you decide not to put it forward? Withdraw, withdraw NOM R in relation to mayor one from today's agenda to enable the acting CEO time to consider the legality of mayor one as a motion.
Is that point two or point one?
No, this is just your point one. I took out, removed and said that.
Withdraw, well, withdraw, I'd have to double check, but I think that's subject to the people who signed the rescission motion.
Yes.
I said if you, so it doesn't need a, it's not a resolution.
So this is the motion, sir. I'll read the motion, okay? You haven't approved that we're going to hear the urgency motion.
Yeah, because I don't know the motion.
You asked me to read the urgency motion, okay? The first part was that we rescind the NOM R in relation to the mayor one from today's agenda for a purpose to enable the acting CEO time to consider the legality of the mayor one as a motion. Council's obligation under Liverpool Council Codes of Meeting Practice, sections three, eleven, twelve and twenty. Consider, next point, the recent supplied findings of the independent investigation into the same matter. And three, findings from the Office of Local Government Investigation when they are made available. Next point, consider council's obligations in accordance with the guidelines for the appointment and oversight of general managers, page fifteen to seventeen. And the need for the CEO to provide a report back to the July council meeting that confirms council has met all of its legal obligations, that substantiates mayor one as a legal motion, that enables council to be fully informed in order to consider the rescission motion.
Yes, councillor Hadid? Can you turn off your mic, councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. But just I want to bring to my colleague attention. No, 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 but just, just to clarify something. If you withdraw NOM R now, which is mean the previous motion is carried. You have to be very careful.
Yeah, sorry.
It's not a part, it's not, it's not a part, it's a different situation. You've got a notice of, rescission of notice of motion. If you withdraw it, which is mean the previous one is carried. You have to be very careful, careful. It's carried. You can't do that. You have to deal with this one and you can put a separate motion if you like. But that one, if you rescind it now, which has mean the previous one is carried.
Yep, thank you, councillor Hadid. And just a quick question from the deputy mayor.
Sorry, that was my question, Mr Mayor. I understand the, I understand the essence of this motion, but I'm confused as to, and they may both be urgency motions, but why they're not separated? Because if you withdraw the rescission motion, that is a point on its own. And then you could potentially, if you wanted to, move an urgency motion with points two to six. But I don't think that they are the same motion. I don't think that, that's legally.
No, I, this is, like, if we go through this in technical terms, my overall gist is this is, this is the alternate motion should the rescission motion get up, rather than being an urgency motion. But because that's, because it's dealing with that matter and that matter, that matter is now, it's been called. And I respect your right of being able to bring up an urgency motion anytime during a council meeting. But considering you're in, the motion, the item has actually been called and you're effectively, sorry, if you're effectively trying to move the, the motion, the, the, the motion that is, if the most rescission motion gets up, you're trying to move the alternate motion as an urgency motion. So I think that is not correct. With regards to the other points, that council's, council's obligations, I don't know, is that a question or a statement? Because it does, there's no, there's no doing in that in point two. And once again, once again, point three, there's no doing to point three. I mean, and this, same with point five. Point six does talk about doing stuff. Yeah, so point six, point six is, is asking, once again, to, what do they call it? To do, to, to do stuff. But I said, I'll go back to whether is, is this urgent or is this the rescission motion? To me, this is the rescission motion. Right? Because the alternate motion provided, provided as part of the rescission motion is effectively that updated. So considering that we're dealing with this matter at the moment and we've called this matter, I don't, I can't accept this as an urgency motion. And I recommend, councillor, that you move this as the alternate motion, dealing with the rescission motion.
Mr Mayor, I beg to differ. Thank you very much for your, your thoughts on the matter. But the point of the matter is that council is heading into very dangerous territory. And we need to have a CEO who can look at all the obligations of council and tick them off to make sure that we have acted in a way that is consistent with the rules, regulations and procedures of local government. Looking through the material myself, I'm of the opinion that for us to do anything on this matter without this advice of this council, that we have done everything in accordance to the, to the findings, taking them into consideration. We haven't done any of that, Mr Mayor. And that puts every one of us as councillors at risk.
I'll, I'll, I'll go back to my point. The, you can, you have hundred percent value, you can validly make those points. But once again, that's not, it's not the urgency motion because the motion is being called.
No, it is the urgency motion.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not ruling it urgent on the basis that the matter is already being dealt with. I called NOM R zero one and I believe that this is the alternate motion rather than the urgency motion. Deputy Mayor? Sorry, microphone, please. Councillor Rhodes, can you turn off your microphone, please?
Sorry, we're speaking, we appear to be having speakers for a motion that's not active on the floor. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Yep. Okay, so we're dealing with the, the motion, the, the rescission motion. Are there any speakers for the rescission motion?
Just a moment, Mr Mayor.
No, I'll give you a moment to check. So we're just gonna get, we're just gonna get, my, thankfully we don't deal with rescissions often, so, and my apologies for not being a hundred percent, but I'm just gonna seek some clarification. Because my understanding is there is actually no speakers for or against for the rescission motion. First, we have to vote on the procedure, we have to vote whether the rescission motion gets up or not. Then, should it succeed, then we enter into a debate. Huh? Yeah, if, would you like a couple, yeah, just happy to. We'll get clarification. I don't want to put the, the general council under too much quick pressure. So we'll just have a, we'll just have a quick five-minute recess while this is going on, happening. On, on research, the practice of council has been over previous years to not actual debate the actual rescission motion until the rescission motion is actually passed. Now, having said that, in the code of meeting practice, doesn't actually state that. So whilst we have operated like that for many years, because the code of meeting practice doesn't state that explicitly, I'm happy to have two speakers for, two speakers against.
Mr Mayor, can I have clarified what you're talking about now? Where are we up to with?
About the, the rescission motion.
The resc, oh, you have gone on to the rescission motion. So you're ruling on the urgency motion?
I've ruled on that already.
Which was?
Which was, it's not urgent because we're currently dealing with that as part of this item. Because what, what I believe you should do with your, with this, with your motion, that should be moved as the alternate, should the rescission motion succeed, that should be the alternate motion.
Mr Mayor, the urgency motion is that we cannot move forward because this council has not been fully informed. And we need to be informed on certain matters before we can actually deal with the rescission motion. So we, this is the urgency motion.
Yeah, but once again, like I said, we're, I've called that item, you then moved the rescission motion. I'm sorry, I'm in urgency motion. But your urgency motion, as I said, relates to the, that actual rescission motion.
Just says to defer it.
Okay, and as I said, we do not have an ability to defer a rescission motion.
And I beg to disagree with you. It is that we must deal with the rescission motion, that is true. But in asking for the rescission motion to be deferred because we have not got the information supplied to us to know exactly where we stand legally and all other implications that are involved around these motions, that unless we've got that information, we really cannot proceed forward.
Yeah, once again, I, I don't see, like I said, I, I don't see how that applies. If you want to move into closed session to, to debate the rescission motion, I'm happy to do that and you can seek the advice of the, of the CEO and the general counsel.
Can I make a point? So the code of meeting practice says that the rescission motion must be dealt with at the next council meeting. But it does not, it does not preclude the possibility that in dealing with it, we resolve to defer consideration of it in order to fulfil our obligations to our ratepayers, to, you know, the, the local government act and to the code of meeting practice in making decisions that are sound and in the best, best interests of the organisation. I believe in hearing what councillor Rhodes has to say, it behooves us all to wait for advice, whether that's legal, financial and, and other advice to support us in making decisions that will undoubtedly have an impact on the organisation. My understanding is that the, the matter that we're sort of discussing is currently before the Supreme Court.
That's, that's not correct.
Regardless.
No, regardless, it's a statement of fact.
But this, but this is the heart of the matter, right? There is a different level of understanding, there is a different, there is a different awareness of what the situation is, even amongst the councils that, that sit here now. So in, in requiring us to make a decision about this, when all of us have different understandings of what is happening with the matter, we have seen one report that we called for at the 24th of April meeting, but we do not have a broader understanding of the facts and where we stand. Then you're requiring us to make a decision on, you know, on, not on solid ground, which I don't believe is in the best interest of our ratepayers. It's certainly not in the best interest of the organisation. And it, you know, it leaves us exposed to potential action further down the line, which I'm sure none, nobody at this table wants.
Yep, so there is, as I said, there is nothing in this code of meeting, code of meeting practice that says we can defer the rescission motion. The rescission motion. It says rescission motions must be dealt with the next council meeting.
And we're asking for it to be deferred.
Huh? Yeah, but it says it must be dealt with.
That's dealing with.
As per the urgency motion?
No, I disagree with that, so thank you. Look, so once again, I've made. No, what comment regarding?
The advice. I would like advice that these, that dealing, dealing with the rescission motion can include, may well include deferring the matter as it's been put forward in the urgency motion before you.
All due respect, councillor, it's my ruling to determine whether it's urgency or not. My recommendation is that this motion that's been put up as an alternate motion to the rescission motion. It's been a month, there's been ample opportunities for councillors to pick up the phone to the council staff, the general counsel, anytime prior to this meeting. Have you, did you try contacting him to get any clarification?
Mr Mayor, we received information regarding this as late as, what, was it last night? Or, I don't know, I'm a little bit ill today, but we've only just received this most recent information that also impacts upon this matter. We just have to be very careful how we proceed.
Agreed. So once again, did any, did any of you speak to the general counsel today?
Well, no, we're here, speaking now.
Okay, great. Well, as our access, as our policy states about access to councillor staff, it's important that councillors seek all the information prior to a council meeting so they can make informed decision-making.
And that's why you're making this not urgent?
It's not urgent because we're dealing with the matter already. It's like you're putting up a motion.
The urgency matter is that we defer so that we get given more information.
I'll go for this one, where, where is that? Okay, number one, you're not asking, hold on, one sec, sorry councillor. You said defer, your motion has not mentioned deferral. It says withdraw, withdraw the rescission motion.
Can we scrap that word, withdraw? Oh, that's been changed.
Excuse me councillor. So to do that, right, in order to withdraw a rescission motion, the signatories of the rescission motion can do that now. That is not a resolution of council to withdraw. You signed it, your name is on it. So point one is out of order, okay? Now, number two, that council, let's read this, that council, council's obligations. What does that mean? That council reflect, that council get a report, that council investigate, that council, right? Once again, point three.
Well, this is, that's been.
This is your motion councillor, I didn't write this.
That's not the motion as given.
The code of meeting practice.
You put your microphone on, please.
My, my microphone is on. Everyone else's microphone is, is also on, therefore mine is not appearing. The code of meeting practice specifically states that the chairperson must give a councillor opportunity to clarify their motion and check if that is what they, that is what they're intending to put forward. I believe councillor Rhodes is trying to clarify the wording of her motion. And it would, I, I think according to the code of meeting practice, giving her that opportunity to clarify what she intends to say would be helpful.
A hundred percent councillor, and I've provided that opportunity once before we went to the break. We've gone into the break, which is, once again, another ample opportunity to have a chat with whatever council staff they needed to do, needed to do. You want me to make another ruling again about why I don't deal with this urgent? Like I said, this urgency is regarding, it's, it's, it's the alternate motion should the rescission motion succeed. That's why it's not an urgent motion, because it's, it's part of that. So, Deputy Mayor?
So this is the third time that it's been ruled that this is not urgent and it will be dealt with in the agenda. So can we please move on?
Yep, I'm happy to. So councillors, if you want to debate the.
Undicaring a conflict of interest and.
All right, well, if you'd like a form and if you have a form there, we can declare it. So we'll now deal with the rescission motion if anybody wants to move in a closed session.
Conflict of interest in the rescission motion.
If there's no.
Because this is just not.
Is it pecuniary or non pecuniary?
It's non pecuniary, but it's.
Significant or less significant?
If we, if we deal with this motion, we're building a bigger hole for ourselves as to whether we have followed due process.
Great. I don't see how that's a, a conflict of interest councillor.
It's a conflict of interest, sir, if I end up in the Supreme Court.
It's of a conflict of interest and you need to fill out the form and provide it to the CEO. All right. As I said, councillor, I'm happy for the motion, for the rescission motion to be debated, even though we haven't allowed that in previous times.
It's going to be debated, happy.
If you want to debate it, I strongly suggest that we, somebody moves a motion to go into closed session because it was, it was dealt with originally in closed session.
Sorry, before you, before you do that, Chair.
Can you? If you'd like to, I've got, so deputy mayor said she wants to move it. Yes, councillor Caliander, what's your, are you seconding that or?
No, no, before we move into closed session, I believe obviously if we're moving to consider the rescission motion, then there is a conflict of interest in regards to you being named within the, the context of what we're discussing. Therefore, I don't believe it's appropriate that you remain in the chair. So I'd like to move that the mayor vacate the chair and the deputy mayor take the chair.
Yeah, I, I don't agree, don't agree with that. And it's up to each councillor how they handle conflicts of interest. You know, you know, we could say that people who are members of the union shouldn't be, shouldn't be part of the. members of the union shouldn't be, shouldn't be part of this as well, because the person mentioned in this is part of the union, so, you know, but it's up to each individual.
Nobody here is part of the union, that, that's a moot point.
It's whether they're a member of the union, that's another thing, right, so it's up to the United Services Union.
Well, I'm not a member of the United Services Union.
That's a moot point. You manage our own conflict of interest, that's the way that you manage.
Yeah, thank you, that's correct, so once again councillors, it's the last time I'm going to ask you if people would like to debate this, we can do it, I recommend we go into closed session if they want to, if not, we'll just deal with the rescission motion and then we can deal with, then we go from there.
I'm happy to move into closed session.
Sorry, so Deputy Mayor has had a session, second to councillor Goodman, you want to move into closed session because it's a personal matter under the, the relevant section? All right, okay, I'd like to put it that we move into closed session, as moved, all those in favour of going to closed session? No, I'd say if, only if people want to debate it. Those against going into closed session? The, the motion is, the motion is lost, we'll deal with the, we'll deal with the rescission motion, all right, I'll put them, I'll put the rescission. No, no, I'll put, I'll put the rescission motion.
Sir, are we debating the rescission motion?
We, we need to move into closed session. Yeah, sorry, can you put your microphone on councillor?
I, I am putting my microphone on, everyone else.
Happy to be patient councillors.
So can we move to go into closed session again?
Yeah, well recount the numbers again, just to make sure, for those who'd like to move into closed session, please raise your hands. Those against, declare carried, so thank you everyone, we have to move into closed session under section, is it 10A2? Oh, what's the exact one? Regarding it because it's a personnel matter. Two, which is the, which is in the booklet four, the adoption of the draft delivery budget programme for 2022-26 and the operational plan and budget for 2024-25, the statement of revenue, pricing, polls, fees and charges and a long-term financial plan 2534.
I'm happy to second that, Mr Mayor.
Great, all those in favour?
Hang on, hang on.
Just bring it forward.
Bring it forward.
All those in favour, against, declare carried, it'd be lovely if I had, you can have a, you can go for it. Yeah, I'd like to, if I can move the recommendation first and I know, I'm assuming what you're going to do, I'd like to move the recommendation with a couple of changes, one, then the booklet four, it seems to have. No, there, oh, hold on.
So there.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the confidential, my apologies, sorry, thank you, I was looking for red. All right, okay, okay. Yeah, this. Oh, two, did I say four, my apologies, okay, CFD. Yep, cool, and thank you, sorry, I was remiss of me, as we went straight into closed session when we, we went back into a break, out of closed session, to inform everyone that the rescission motion was lost and the, the original motion stands. So, okay, so CFD02, page 864, in the purple booklet, book number four, I would like to move the recommendation with some adjustments to it. First and foremost, a sum of $620,000 for the suburb of Austral to deliver safety measures including temporary roundabouts, to the following intersections but not limited to, Fourth and Fifth Avenue, Fourth and Sixth Avenue. Yeah, Fourth and Fifth, Fourth and Sixth, Fourth and Eleventh. Edmondson and Tenth, Edmondson and Eleventh. Fifteenth and Gerner. Fifteenth and Twenty-Eighth, Fifteenth and Twenty-Second. Fifteenth and Gerner, Fifteenth doesn't touch Gerner, must be, what's the street I'm looking for, Craig, Fifteenth and Craig.
It was Fourth and Sixth, sorry, after, after Fourth and Fifth, it was Fourth and Sixth, I think, was it?
Yeah, Fourth and Fifth, Fourth and Sixth, Fourth and Eleventh. Design and deliver traffic calming devices on Fourth and Edmondson Avenue, and I'll just give you a list. Yeah, Fourth and Edmondson. And these are the following streets, sorry, there's like. Been doing research councillor, and the, should work, Hayvale, Seventh, Broadacre, Eighth, Ninth, Tenth, Twelfth, Thirteenth, Fourteenth. Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Twelfth, Thirteenth and Fourteenth. Another point, a special consideration of temporary traffic lights on Craig and Fifteenth. $250,000 for the tourism ecosystem, including but not limited to web, EDM, social, print, including Sari Street. $100,000 for public art in Big Park. $250,000 for a pump track at Lieutenant Cantello Reserve. And last but not least, $1 million for women's change room and general change room improvements for sporting facilities to be divided over, over twenty different facilities.
Mayor, quick question? Or does this need to go back to traffic committee?
To what, sorry?
Does this need to go back to traffic committee?
Yes, it would, yes, so do I have a second for that? Second to Deputy Mayor?
So would this all?
Microphone please councillor.
With this all considered, in the 2025 budget, where does that leave us?
We're, we are still in surplus, and while I speak for the motion, the CFO is adding the numbers and I'll get to him in a couple of minutes. Councillors, once again, I want to thank everyone involved in the, in the budget process, you know, hopefully, it's a, we, we achieve, we delivered what we want to achieve and I believe that we can, hopefully, if you, if you look at it, once we get started getting income for this building, you know, that's going to put us in a much stronger financial position, and hopefully, once again, income for Thirty-Three More Street and another staff are working very, very, very hard on locking that in. Ultimately, council has to deliver for the community, I'll start backwards, and I'm very proud of this motion, I'm very proud and thankful for the Deputy Mayor, for her strong representation on this issue and the work that she has done, going to our change rooms in pretty much, I would guesstimate, at least eighty-five percent of our sporting fields are probably change rooms that we wouldn't want to use ourselves, and this sends a clear statement that by good economic management, that we're giving, we're making sure that the community's money goes to the community, we're not begging, when I'm there, we're not there begging and waiting with our hands out to improve the change rooms, yes, I'm sure our staff will go out there and work very hard to try to double this money and with grants and so on and so forth, but it's clear to at least the twenty different facilities that they will get the much, much, much needed upgrade to make at least those facilities better, this is part of our investing back in the community, hopefully we'll have more community hubs out there with state of the art facilities, but the reality is, we should not make people wait five, ten years or whatever it is to improve it, we should be doing it now. The other element, we've seen Cantello Reserve, Cantello Reserve is an amazing facility, I remember growing up and riding my bike there, had beautiful bike tracks and all that throughout the area and another staff looking at reinstating a lot of those walking tracks, which is really one of the best opportunities to interact with nature within our community, where you could walk through the bush and the scrub and get to the river, and hopefully i- i- in continuing on the work of the previous council who went out there and funded Livy's place out there, this hopefully will then, in direct response to the community and I thank those community members, those young community members who have lobbied strongly to get this facility there, we, we eventually got there, we know the importance of Big Park, having that public art there is very important, once again, building on the success of that park and the changes that were made to it during a couple of terms of council ago. Councillor Rhodes has been very, a very, very strong advocate regarding tourism for the community, getting the tourism website up and running and everything associated with that, and in discussions with staff, there has always been that challenge of money, this hopefully will finally get this up and running in, in time with the, in time with the airport, and we will hopefully be, we, we, we will be there and celebrating the success of Sari Street, which was launched officially on the 7th of November last year on Liverpool's birthday, giving them the opportunity to have that online presence with this, with this, with the support of, of council. The, did I mention the South Park one? I don't think I mentioned the South Park one, I think, I'm sorry, I may have skipped the South Park one, can I say one more please? And this is a response to a, a, a grant that they had where they needed some funding for, this is a, $50,000 for South Park, Charlton Street for the funding of the pavilion and oning upgrade. Deputy Mayor, happy with that? Yep, great, with Austral, you know, since 2017, we have seen the transformation of five acre lots into small suburban lots and, but unfortunately, no safety measures were applied, you could say, to any of the existing street network within that area, if this was a different process that went, went through, if it wasn't led under a state environmental planning policy, every development would have had to provide upgrades to make the area safe, for example, many buildings that have gone up in the CBD, a hundred, two hundred dwellings, for example, they're forced to put a roundabout to improve that intersection. In Austral, we've had, we've had roughly 5,000 at least homes being built in that area since 2017, and if you averaged out, you probably got almost two, two cars for every household, that's 10,000 extra cars that have moved into Austral. We saw the wonderful success by one roundabout on the corner of Fifteenth and Edmondson Ave, Fifteenth and Edmondson Avenue, what that has delivered from a safety point of view, it's probably the best return on investment that we could actually get for helping our community become safer, what that has highlighted is temporary measures do work, we have, we, but then that means we have a whole bunch of other roundabouts and intersections that do need similar treatments and safety, because ultimately, it's not fair for our community to, for us to be collecting rates on those areas and not reinvesting in it, ideally we'd love to put the infrastructure up front, ideally we'd love to go and build those roads brand new, council doesn't have that money, it's us, it's council taking responsibility for ultimately federal government policy, which is, which increases immigration to Australia, state government house policy, which goes out there and runs housing and puts housing targets on us, but then council is left to front the bill, today, we are telling you this $620,000 will provide a significant, significant, significant improvement into the safety of the community in Austral and those around, and I strongly recommend that you support it, and thankfully, we can do this because we've been, put ourselves in a positive financial situation, we've been able to make this investment, so on top of all that, $177 million, I think we've just cracked, was it, maybe got close to $180 million now with the other couple of adjustments, not far off of it, in infrastructure, as was pointed before, less than last year, but less because it's not going into one building, this is being spread throughout the community, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a record amount of money investment, hopefully, we can continue to do more in the future, especially when we start going, when we start getting, releasing that seven eleven contributions, which is sitting at that $280 million mark, but, which is very important that we get out there as well, but I think it's wonderful and it's good to be here and hopefully makes all those painful, painful budget meetings, the people delivering them were painful, but always, it's never good news, but it's, it's positive, actually, there is, there is some positivity at the end of it, that after these many, many meetings, which we thank the staff for, and the wonderful professionalism, that we've been able to deliver this for the community. Councillor Green?
I'd just like to make a comment, I understand that as councillors, that we make collective decisions, our decision making is as a collective, and I don't have a great deal of problem with any of the, the proposals that you've put on, on as an amendment, and I don't, I certainly agree with what you've said about how money should be spent back on to the community, not a problem with that at all, what I do have a problem with, I would have appreciated, and this has happened before, that when it's with the budget and it's something about these extra spending, was it not possible to have sent, like a communique to maybe councillors that, you know, not everybody may have known about these additional expenses or, or investments, and I, I just, so that, you know, when I'm sitting here, that I'm comfortable, I've got a, a attached report from the Chief Financial Officer to say, yep, this is all fine, it's within that, I recommend that you support it, it's just, I guess, what I'm saying is, I, I want to be really comfortable and confident in my role to make informed decisions, so I, I would just have appreciated a bit of a heads up.
Thank you, councillor Goodman?
Can I just add to the list? Increase civic programme budget by $100,000 to deliver the following events, gift of time, civic reception, building the new Liverpool and park openings, capital works, civil launches.
Do you want to say that a little bit slower? I'm happy to support that, as a Deputy Mayor, happy to support that.
Particularly with the gift of time coming back, I think that's really important for our volunteers on our committees, thank you.
Councillor Rhodes, did you want to say something?
You were going to say it again. You sort of mumbled away on the last one.
Increase civic programme budget...
Oh, sorry.
Increase civic programme budget by $100,000 to deliver the following events: gift of time, civic reception, building the new Liverpool, and park openings, capital works, civic launches.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. The, nothing, no objection to the, to the things that are being nominated, just confirmation that in the operational programme that we're going to be able to fit all this in, in delivery, in the 25 budget?
So your question is, can council deliver the capital works programme?
Yeah, can we deliver all of that as well as the capital works programme that we've already?
I'll refer that operational question to the CEO.
Yep, sorry, through, through the mayor. There's nothing material that would indicate that we can't deliver that programme of works, given the budget and the diversity of works. The only cave it would be the extent to which the million-dollar grant programme, 20 times 50, is taken up and how we procure those services. That would be the one that causes me the most pain points within the year, but certainly doable.
The million-dollar grant?
Yeah, there was, there was upgrades there of women's dressing rooms.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that's 20 grants of $50,000 each. So the procurement of that, I'll be looking at some efficiencies in relation to, you know, consistency of supplier. And then if you did that, you've only got 12 months and a year, and we've got 20 change rooms to do. And then, so that one is one we'll have to think about, but nothing else materially in there that causes me any concern.
Yeah. The reason why I was just questioning is because we do realise that in this budget, it's, it's great, I'm just concerned about what is going to hang over until the following year, noting that the following year, the budget isn't going to look as good as this year regarding our long-term debt that the cost of the civic centre is given to council. And, yeah, just confirmation that you think that we'll be able to deliver it all, whether it's this year or next year?
Particularly optimistic, councillor.
We can remove the tourism website if you want.
We can what?
Remove the tourism website if you want. Avienda?
Yes. So I recall in a previous draft version of the, of the budget, there was a reference to sale of a couple of council assets. That doesn't seem to be in this version of it. Through you, can I ask what the status of that is?
I'll refer to the CEO.
I'll just refer to the Director of City Futures on the update, or Director of Corporate Services on the update. Who were both involved?
Okay. If I understand the correct, to you, to the General Manager, the properties are in the budget, the Hammondville and the Hoxton Park Road. Moore Street is in year three. It was put in two years ago as year five, which is now year three from now. They are in the budget.
Through the Chair, one of those properties houses the SES. Under the Local Government Act, we have a requirement to house the SES. My understanding is that recently discussions with them were around perhaps an additional location for them to operate out of, given the size of our local government area. If that property is sold off, what is the cost of sourcing an alternate location, given that, that location was fitted out specifically for them and is a pretty significant, at a significant cost?
Yep. Understand the question. At the moment, we are in early-stage discussions in relation to alternate locations. One of those locations looks like Rose Street, the old mechanical workshop in Rose Street, so down the bottom of the cul-de-sac straight ahead. That building there would be perfect. It's very fit for purpose. Cost to complete, haven't done the exact modelling yet, but it certainly would be absorbed in the, the profits from the sale of 3 Hoxton Park Road.
In, in that case, I have to make a declaration of interest, given my recent promotion to Parliamentary Secretary for Emergency Services, which covers the SES, and given that it references, you know, an impact to them, I will have to withdraw from further discussion of this item and, and voting on, on this item.
Are you declaring an interest?
Yes, I am.
I'm just saying, if you've got the, if you can please fill out the form properly and then read, read it out in the appropriate fashion.
Fine, but I'm just letting the, the nature of the meeting know that I will have to withdraw from further discussion of this item.
So once again, I guess it's, if you can, is it pecuniary, non-pecuniary, significant, less significant? Will you be staying in or leaving the chambers?
Oh, sure. It is significant, non-pecuniary, and I will have to leave the chambers, given it conflicts with my recent role as Parliamentary Secretary for Emergency Services.
Wonderful, thank you. If you just have that filled out and passed to the CEO, please, that would be wonderful. We just have to wait till she leaves the chambers before we can continue then.
Mr. Mayor, just...
Just a moment. I'd be free to fill it out while you're outside, if you like.
It's a long way to walk.
Actually, just, just sorry, just a technicality. She, when you go outside, does that mean you have to be away from the speakers to hear? I'm pretty sure that's how... Okay, good, great. I just... I remember that's how, that's how it was in the old, the old chambers. Yep, Councillor Rhodes?
Yeah, just clarification again, if I may, Mr. Mayor. The, the long-term budget is still unaltered in the assumptions that have been made and our direction towards covering the, the debt of the civic centre and moving forward back into the black and in the number of years that was put to council last. That has remained unaltered.
Waiting for the Director of Corporate Service Support and CFO to...
Answer the question?
Answer the question. I'm sure there would be, I imagine there is an effect, but it's a minimal effect. Councillor Rhodes is asking, with these changes, what is the impact on the long-term financial plan?
Through you, Mr. CEO. All the budget changes that I've heard so far, including the ones that are proposed in the, in the report, would reduce the surplus to $2.8 million, because only $100,000 of what I've seen on the screen, plus $1 million that's in the report, are operating costs, all the rest are capital costs. There will be a $2.5 million effect to our reserves, the cash effect. But the operating result, and I'll get the CFO to confirm, I, I see it now looking something in the order of $2.8 million.
So the, sorry. So the projections that have been reported to council on our long-term strategy of bringing council out of debt in the long-term budget remains basically unaltered. That it was going to take us, the last count, I think, was six years or was it 10 years for us to return to a position in the black?
Through you, through the CEO, that they're two different questions. In terms of going into the black, yes, we will, I, I will have to, I'll have to check what the effect of the resolutions are now to, how that may affect the timing of that. But we were to go into the black in 2030, it may now be potentially 3031. What was the other? It was the...
That space. Sorry. I can't look you in the eye, sir, and talk into the mic at the one time. No, that was basically what I'm asking, the projection, the assumptions that we've made and the projection of us, as we all understand, we've got a long, a long-term debt as a result of the, this fabulous building, and that we have taken that into consideration. And you're telling me that it is with these latest figures that it has altered our projection from previous projections by one or two years? Is that what you're saying to me?
I'm saying that, that might be the case, that will be the case probably with the operating result. But in terms of paying off debt, most of our debt is, I'm just looking at my CFO, 15 years? 20 years. So, so we won't be debt-free, if that's, that's another question. It's 20 years for, of debt repayments. Yes.
And can I just ask a further question to that through you, Mr. Mayor, and potentially through the CEO? And, and that long-term plan changes with every change that we make to a budget at every step of the process, correct?
That's correct, depending on whether it's, obviously, it affects the cash, the cash reserves, and depending on whether it's capital or operating, it'll affect the operating results as well.
Just one question. Just confirming that the sale of 33 Moore was actually done or was projected prior to this council being elected? Is that correct?
No. It was done two years ago.
This is our second budget?
What, councillor, what was projected is that when you go to the council website, there's a frequently asked questions regarding Civic Place. And in it, one of the questions is, how will the building be funded? And it talks about rental income and then the disposal of surplus council properties. Didn't name any specific properties, but it said that's what had council had resolved previously. I'll go, I'll go councillor Hadid and you councillor Harald, that's right.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a question to Acting CEO. Well, given the property market circumstances now, and as I understood, the sale of Hoxton Park, it's a very important aspect of our budget. So now, if we couldn't sell the Hoxton Park Road, do you have any plan B to manage the budget?
The, thank you for the question. So the, the timing, again, we will take a best position for council in relation to the strategic sale of any asset. Where the, the market changes materially, that would prohibit us taking that position, we come back to council with a different proposition. So whilst hypothetical, it's not about Plan Bs per se, it's about Plan A plus one, which would really be us reporting back to council that the market has changed in such a significant manner that it's not value for money to sell that asset. And then that would return to be a council decision. And also, in relation to our operating result, we've had some fairly conservative revenue projections in relation to some of the activities we're doing at Cow Pasture Road. So we expect other, other activities to also help with budget forecasts in the future.
Yeah, but the problem is, my concern is, if we keep spending based on the sale of Hoxton Park Road, and we fail to sell Hoxton Park Road, and as you know, look, it's based on the surplus we've got, we're going to spend $1 million-plus. So, you know, that is my concern later on. So we should have like a Plan B in case we couldn't sell the property to manage our budget in, in a proper way.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess, again, well, if you want to call it Plan B, Plan B is to test the market assumptions, test the pricing and the valuations that we've had on Hoxton Park Road continually. Where those valuations or the market or the pricing changes to the extent that we have a red flag emerging in relation to not meeting a budget forecast, we would then return to council and, and forecast that. The, in the end, we have, I think, 217 building assets. The real trick now is to look at what other assets, if we had to play a Plan B, what other assets are available that may not be as, in the, in the same condition or otherwise as 3 Hoxton Park Road. So it's looking across the whole portfolio.
Just to be reassured regarding that, you know, I, I just want to be clear that the, the budget, although we may pass it today, comes to us continually for, for updates and for changes and for, as we go through the year, if it's not monthly, it's at least quarterly, correct? And that will continue to happen, based on the assumptions made today?
Correct, correctly answered, councillor. And also, that's the opportunity to reforecast, reposition, restrategise, and return to council for good direction.
Thank you.
Councillor Harald?
Thank you, thank you. I, in light of some of the questions here, I would actually like to, to put forward an amended motion. And I'd like to put forward, and then I'll hopefully discuss it, is remove all references to the sale of income-producing assets and reconsider its impact on council budget and consider remedial action council can take to reduce that impact. Now, that may not be legally correct, and hence I asked legal people to maybe modify that to some extent and look at something I haven't considered. But I'm happy to speak in support of that. Or do you want me to, or do you want to go through seconding it and so on first?
So you're, it's, yeah, this would be, it's quite significant, it's a budget thing.
Absolutely. You're talking about selling something that you may not be able, as councillor Hadid said, it may not sell particularly the market. So your profit that you, the budget surplus that you expect may not occur. There are other issues, sorry to interrupt, sorry, there are other issues that have not been discussed. The impact of number three Hoxton Park Road on several issues that, and for that reason, you may not be able to sell it.
So I think this is more of a foreshadowed motion?
Yes. I didn't want to change it, it just added to it, you could make this...
Because, no, I'll tell you what, because if you remove all references, okay, just before you amend anything, before, remove all references to the sale of income-producing assets and consider impact on council budget in immediate action to reduce that impact. So I will, maybe the Director of Corporate Support can answer it much more eloquent than I have, but I think that's a significant change, if you're saying they're not in there anymore. So hand over, if I can, through the CEO.
Right, through the CEO. That will have a significant effect on the operating result, a significant effect on the cash flows. And with, for example, Moore Street, part of that sale was to, was to repay $23 million worth of debt, the last, the second installment from T Corp. And I just remind the councillors that if we were to make those changes, we would have to go back to, to the three banks to, to advise them and... to go back to, to the three banks to, to advise them and, because obviously, any changes to our long term financial plan, they get a copy of and we have to notify if any of those sort of changes. So there'll be significant effects both to the operating result, to the cash flow balance of reserves over the next ten years, and in terms of paying, reducing that debt. The remainder of the, the income from sale of Moore Street was, was to go to capital works program, so that would also be affected.
Can I continue? Sorry.
Yeah, so I'm, based upon that, I'll accept this is a foreshadowed motion. But, you know, should we be dealing with it, we would have to, we would have to pause and allow this council staff to update those numbers because we can't vote on it without understanding what that translates to in numerical sense. Is there a seconder, is there a seconder for the foreshadowed motion?
I'm happy to withdraw it and then argue, and then speak against the motion.
There's no seconder? Are you seconding it?
I have another question, actually.
I just need to, I just need to know, are you, are you, you will draw it? Okay, no need to worry about seconding it, yep.
May I ask my question?
Yes.
Okay. In terms of our three, Hoxton Park Road, and I guess I'm asking a question through the chair to the acting CEO, what effect will that have on the Woodward Park precinct master plan? And in what ways will, might that master plan either need to be changed? Because as I understand it, it's three Hired Park Road, some land that is around that is integral to the Woodward Park precinct master plan. So I guess exploring those kinds of, of consequences or impacts or implications might be useful.
Can I just get clarification? Because there's around ten master plans for Woodward Park.
Not, not the Brickmakers Creek one, I'm not. It's the, the master, the, the, the Woodward Park master plan, the precinct that looks at replacement of Whitlam Centre, the leisure centre. I mean, I think others, they know more about it than myself, but it has been expressed as a concern to me.
I'll pass on this here, but I'll, I'll just note as well, just before he speaks for one moment, is that the, there's a whole master plan, the latest one for that, for that precinct, at least three hectares of that land is owned by the Bulldogs, and we have master planned over that. So it's, yeah, so ultimately, it's a whole, it's a whole precinct wide approach, but I'll hand over to the CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll hand over to Director City Futures, just on the caveat as well, that any, again, any material issue that we weren't getting best value for money, we would just bring back to council. But I'll hand over to Director City Futures to give us an update on how that may affect many master plans.
I, I might just give some information and maybe defer to Director Bono because it was her period of directorship over it, but I did check on this and was advised that the master plan, where identified, putting the Aquatic Centre there, was exhibited but didn't get adopted by council. But I'll get that confirmed and, and Director Bono may have more information, and maybe we come back to you with more information on that.
Through the CEO, with any master plan and variation, we can, we bring a revised version to the council. We've done that through council a number of times, once we got funding. In regards to the aquatic, we've done a further study, as you could appreciate in this term of council, which talked about a re, not a knockdown rebuild, but a repurpose of the existing, which means that kind of takes away that need to have that aquatic in that area. So, and that was endorsed by the council.
Thank you, thank you. Look, just to add to that, that, what councillor, Dr. Betty Green raised, the issue of the master plan. The master plan, the latest of that master plan, there were some issues there, council specifically went to the trouble of repurchasing that block of land that you're now contemplating selling. And the reason that was repurchased was to fit in with that Woodward Park recreational master plan. Council Rhodes, you and I were asked to repurchase that property, you may recall, in the previous term of council. We purchased that back at the original price that we sold the whole lot for. And so, you know, that was a sad event. And now you're contemplating selling it again? Just remember the impact this will have. This will have an impact on the forty two million dollar Brickmaker Creek rehabilitation area there. Forty two million dollars is going to be spent there. This is part of that land. You can't really sell that if that's what you want to do. You'll lose that forty two million dollars, as I was told the last time, because I said, look, you can't rehabilitate Brickmakers Creek because that's going to cause you a lot of issues with rats, snakes, mice, mosquitoes and flooding. And I was told, oh no, we'll sort that out, we can't afford to give the forty two million dollars back. But now you're contemplating selling land that's essential for that. You know, I just can't understand it.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you a better one, councillor Harald. In the recent state budget, there's been two or three million dollars allocated for investigations for the Liverpool bypass, which would run through Brickmakers Creek.
There you are. So the whole thing is all, look, there's a couple of other things that while I, I'm speaking against it, when you mentioned the two hundred million dollars deficit that we've got, that was all accounted for.
Debt, not deficit.
Debt, debt. Okay, the two hundred million dollar debt. That debt was anticipated to be paid back over a twenty year period. So it's a twenty year debt, not something that happened last year or the year before. And incidentally, four hundred million dollars was spent last term of council. And, and to say that, oh, we've got two hundred million dollars as a debt and that's important? Yeah, sure, it's important, but we've got ways and means of paying it back, which you're now contemplating selling. We originally said thirty three Moore Street, the income from that was to pay back the loans of the Civic Place, as well as the library. Add those two together, plus eighty percent of this place is probably, so far has been leased out. When you add all that up, we are actually in a better financial position by having thirty three Moore Street and having this place than without it. If you take that all away, we would be worse off. Add it up. But nonetheless, if that's what you want to do, that's what you do. The point is, we are better off with those income producing assets than selling them. If that isn't the case, I don't know what you're doing with your accounting, but from my simple mathematics, adding those incomes up is more than what you need to pay back the loan for this place. And if it's over a twenty year period, at the end of twenty years, you've got both. And then they both become income producing assets that you can use for other, other purposes instead of continually increasing rates. I fail to see why selling income producing assets, as the residents who spoke at this meeting earlier said, why selling that? That just doesn't seem logical to me. But I'll be voting against it.
Sorry, question, is this building eighty percent leased out?
I think it's zero percent leased at the moment. Oh, no, sorry, I take that back, no, that's wrong. There are, there's one committed, two committed.
I'll just revert to the-
Lease signed, committed? Or just committed?
Thank you, acting CEO. One floor, as councillors may have observed, is currently being fitted out with St George's Committee housing that's leased.
So that's committed?
Well, it's a lease. And the coffee cart and the coffee operation is a lease. As you can see, it's operating already in a temporary manner. They've got a DA to fit out, which will be much more substantial, and it's already being enjoyed by the staff of the building for meetings and things. Thank you. And then I'm afraid the further discussions are all subject to commercial incompetence. And, but I can assure councillors that there's some progress occurring. In fact, I'm working on it right now while I've been listening to the council meeting, there's progress occurring, and it's optimistic.
So one floor is committed?
That's not eighty percent, so just for clarity. Thank you.
If I can, sorry, Peter. At the last governance meeting, we talked about this, and we, I was assured that by the end of this year, we would have the majority of this place leased out. Now, did I get something wrong? Did I turn my hearing aid on well enough, I imagine? Mr. Mayor-
We, we, we were told, we were told in our first briefing session that certain tenants had committed to leasing out thirty three Moore Street. We were told that at our first briefing session. And committed is committed, binding agreement. And, but the definition of commitment that we have is different than others. So, so I'm not sure if it has anything to do with your hearing aid.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It seems, isn't it incredible, since the story began about our civic centre, it's always been around this issue, the cost and how we're going to pay for it. Councillor Harald is correct, that we were always given the best scenario and the bad scenario. This is the assumptions that council makes of things that might happen or may not happen. And the good scenario was that we would lease out all of our available buildings, and that would cover the costs of our, of our loans that we took out to build this wonderful building. The bad scenario was, and this has been since two thousand and twenty, twenty one, I think was the last time when the figures were put to us, and we said, what's the good scenario and the bad scenario? Tell us the worst possible situation and the best possible situation. So we're still talking about the same thing. So they've always been a part of council's assumptions, but we haven't got that crystal ball, we can't tell what is going to happen in the future. We're in that situation at the moment that the, it's an uncertain scenario. So that is why those assets are still on the table that they would be sold, because we haven't met the, the scenario case where all the buildings are leased out to be able to pay for the debt of building this building. That's the way I understand it, but could I have some sort of confirmation from the financial, through the CEO, as to council's understanding?
Thank you, councillor. There's a number of conversations on foot. I expect that at our next council meeting, the crystal ball will be well and truly polished, and we will give you a very clear, very clear forecast on utilization of this building and other buildings. It is significantly commercial and confident at the moment, but let me just say, we are very optimistic that we will go past your eighty percent marker, councillor Harald, and we will have some news back as soon as we can deliver that to council.
So just one further question then. So the repayment of our loans are not subject to the leasing out of all of council's assets? Or are they?
So if we reverse back a moment, if somebody wants to build a commercial building, generally they don't have a couple hundred million bucks lying around, they go to a bank. The bank would then say, okay, we need to de-risk this. So it is normally de-risked by having a commitment from a tenant, saying normally around at least fifty percent, saying fifty percent of the building is leased out. Here's the document, it's a good quality tenant, or it's multiple good quality tenants. And the bank will say, great, I'll lend you money because you've got an income source to pay that off. With this building, and then they would take a mortgage against the property and against the building. With this building, technically, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is no mortgage on this building as such, right? So council borrowed the money, right, without having, without having that pre-committed lease to pay for a significant amount of the cost and de-risking the scenario. The reason why the bank did that and accepted the loan was because their security is their rates income. So they're, they are saying, right, we have council in the previous term said to the bank, right, we're going to pay you your eight, nine million dollars a year, and don't worry about the tenants, here's our rate for revenue coming in. So the bank's like, yeah, fantastic, the rates are going to come in. So they get effectively, they get, when the rates come in, their hand is in the trough first, take their bit out. And that's what happens. So buildings aren't secured against that, the rate income is what's secured this time.
So basically, you're saying that when this building is leased out, and perhaps the, the Moore Street building, that would be sufficient to cover the, the loans that we took out to build this building?
That would be, yeah, or that was what was projected at that time, roughly when you look at what was on the council, on the council frequently asked questions.
I guess what the, what the people might be concerned about is that the, the money that we would get from the sale of the property, one would understand if it is to cover new assets. This is a new asset. The old council building and the oldest council building, the one that burnt down, are assets that could be provided to afford this particular new asset, which is the council building. And people, I think, pretty much understand that. But what we can't work out is if that is what is actually happening in the sale of the, of the building.
The, the, the big question that we have to answer for the community is that when you have an infrastructure backlog the size that we do, of how long do you keep that going for? You know, and an example today is, is those change rooms, substandard, more than over deal with. Do we say to the community, hey, look, we've got a shiny building, great, but you've got a change room, there's no money been spent on it since nineteen sixty when it was built? So, you know, that becomes a question of equity. We can continue buying assets, but that's fine. And yes, it will give us more income producing asset, it will give us, it will give us more income. We can do that. But the question is, once again, tell little Sarah and little Johnny how great their change rooms are, ask them how feel they, how feel Liverpool, how safe the players at Liverpool Olympic field when they go to play sport at night time, and they can't walk to the toilet because it's so bloody scary. So there's those questions at hand. But, and I think councils, I think there's, I think everyone's had ample opportunity to express their views. These are budget, budget discussions that we can go into more detail. We've had numerous sessions about this previously. I'll, I'll ask, does the seconder have, do you want to speak as a sort of writer reply?
Just, just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to thank all the staff for the work that they've put into this. This has been, from my recollection, about a four month process. With the questions coming today from the floor, I, I shudder to say that maybe we need to make it a six month process. I mean, we don't want to have these kind of questions at this point if we can help that. And I don't, I don't, I thank staff for the amount of workshops we've had. I thought that we probably got there, but not, not quite. So next time, maybe we'll start a bit earlier. But thank you very much for all of that work. I think we can very proudly go to the community with this, and I commend staff for their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And then likewise, I echo those statements. And to make the night shorter, I will now have nothing else to say because Deputy Mayor said it so wonderfully. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Councillor, those against? Right, I'll call it, I declare carried, I declare division. All those of a favour, please stand. Oh, sorry, I could have done the old, the new fashioned way. Oh, sorry, I could have done the old, the new fashioned way. Get some blood circulation. Those against? Did you want us to do it online or quickly? All right, let's go, just do it online. Six votes. Is that everyone?
No.
Councillor, what do we have? We have ten minus one. And councillor Kinnive, just manually, you record him? Oh, councillor, he was councillor Kinnive was no. Okay, I declare the motion carried. Thank you. It was an enjoyable discussion. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so we'll now go to Plan Zero One, which is page sixty-two, tab two, with a recommendation on page sixty-three. Move Deputy Mayor, seconded, seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. All right, sorry, councillor, my apologies, councillor Calienda, can somebody call her? We'll just wait for her. Is she, someone? Give her. Yeah, you can open that, that'd be great. Keep one, keep one door open, please. Okay. Did you have any comments on Plan Zero One, councillor Calienda? No comment. No? Okay. All right. If that's the case, it's been put by, it's been moved by councillor, Deputy Mayor. It's been seconded by councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I will put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands, the planning matter. Is that unanimous? Yep, then it was unanimous, councillor Kinnive voted for it. Next item, I'm very proud to move Plan Zero Two, the report back on the parking, parking enforcement policy. I will move this way, seconded councillor Amun.
Can I make a slight amendment, please?
Yes, what's your amendment?
Mail out to all the households notifying residents of the changes and funded from general funds.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. Councillor Amun, you happy with that? Right, this.
Just to clarify, where will that mail out go? To the entire LGA or? And will it highlight the particular affected areas? Because just in the report, there are several areas where that will not apply. And there are discussions happening around, you know, parking permit schemes and things like that, which might be confusing to people. So for example, in Warwick Farm, residents are actively seeking a parking permit scheme there. And so, you know, a mail out of that nature to them might be kind of confusing, which is why I ask.
So the.
It, it actually says just the, the rolled curbs. In Warwick Farm, there is no rolled curbs, so it doesn't apply to them.
But I think it's important because there's been a lot of discussion.
It actually goes in the letter.
I think it's important, there's been a lot of discussion about this for a long time, that we simply do this mail out in reference just to the parking changes that we're talking about now. I, I agree, yes.
Yeah, the, the staff, the staff have informed that it's what they call it. It's a, it's easier to send out to the whole community. And it's a change that affects all of Liverpool. Take your point, it's not everywhere, but people need to understand. But good comments need to come into place because there are, there are risks with this with regards to acting respectfully to people's lawns and infrastructure. I think it's in, if you live in Warwick Farm, but you might be going somewhere else. I think it comes, it comes into play.
I, I don't disagree, but I'm just saying it might cause confusion amongst areas where there is an active, you know, desire for a parking permit scheme to receive a letter from council basically saying, you know, X, Y, Z kind of thing. And, and I take the point that there's going to be reference to words like rolled curbs, et cetera. But I challenge, you know, all, everyone to go into the community and say, hey, do you know what rolled curbs are? And I can probably, you know, imagine that nine times out of ten, people would be like, what are you talking about?
Can I, can I maybe just, just provide that feedback to the CEO or relevant staff afterwards? Should this be adopted so it can be, it could be incorporated? Because, yeah, you bring valid points and not everyone will be there. Yeah. And I'll say, speaking for the motion, I'm very excited because this has probably been a ten-year, a ten-year mission. So I feel like a failure that it's taken so long to get done. But regardless, we.
I think it's longer than that, Mr. Mayor, because a lot of other people have put this motion up a long time ago.
Yep, so it's great that we, we finally found a way to crack, crack, crack this nut and apply common sense. But we also need common sense for our community as well. Like I said, it's, and I think councillor Goodman, it's a good, that you bring forward that it's, we should tell everyone about it because, yeah, we don't want people just coming up there ripping up grass and all that sort of stuff, potentially hurting infrastructure. So respect is very important in this, to be able to make this work. And obviously not blocking pedestrian footpaths, so on and so forth. But I, but I think it's great. So thank you to all the staff involved. I know they've worked very diligently on it, ensuring from all different points of view, from a legal point of view, from a planning point of view. So thank you, everyone. And I strongly, strongly recommend that be supported. Councillor Hall?
Just one point of view. If you look at the results back from the residents, only fifty percent of the residents actually agree with this. They've raised some very considerable issues. And I know it only applies to rolled curbs. And I live in an area where we do have rolled curbs. But people, we need to be very careful that people don't take this as they can park in areas where you don't have a rolled curve. And there are very, very many areas like that. My, my issue with this is that it doesn't address current issues. We have an area in some of the newer areas where people have fed up with cars parking on the front of their verge. And they've actually put stakes and things like this, which are dangerous. And I've been notified by the postman that in some areas in West Hoxton, where this has occurred, where people are proud of their front lawns and they don't want people with four-wheel drives chewing up the lawn. So we need to be careful. It isn't just that either, it's chewing up the lawn. You've got water, water and store water drainage going out there. And if people drive on those and burst those, who's going to fix it? This is going to be the responsibility, I would feel, council, because it's council land that's being affected. So just be careful, I won't be supporting it.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to send out a mail out, maybe have diagrams showing the curved and the curved curbs. So that way they understand the difference and where they can and can't park. And showing the butterfly drainage in terms of the other one, where if they go over it, it actually cracks. So give them some diagrams to show, yes, it's a tick, you can do it this way, or it's a cross, no, you can't. So even someone that doesn't speak English gets it, is able to understand it just by the diagram. Just to make things a little easier.
And, and I think there should be an opportunity, on your point, councillor Hall, that, you know, someone could, please don't park on my grass, you know what I mean? Even though technically it's not their grass, but they do look after it. So I think there should be, and that could cover, that's why I think it's important that, yeah. You know, something that clearly, in plain English, English versus council speak, all the respect to council, that outlines how to do it with good diagrams, that explains, you know what I mean? It's, it's important to get, to get this right. But yeah, on the scheme of this, we don't want emergency vehicles being stuck because they can't get through streets. We don't want people, but people getting fined for parking in front of their house. You know, I had someone, I had someone a few years ago where they said, you know, there was a funeral, there was a funeral on the street because a young girl had passed away. And then council came to find people. And it's like, yeah, it's just, yeah.
How do we get, a question, how do we get over the issue with the difference between the state legislation and our?
Covered in the report.
I read it, but it appears the state legislation overrides it.
I'll refer the CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll refer to the Director of Planning and Compliance.
Thank you, through the acting CEO. The policy doesn't change the legislation, the legislation applies. However, council is empowered to apply discretion as it sees fit. So this policy is a formalised way of applying discretion. So the community is clear about what we're applying discretion on. It does not change the road rule, however.
My issue is if I have a property and somebody parks in the front of that illegally and council says, oh, you know, our discretion is you can park there. And then I go to the state government and say, these people are breaking the rule. Who wins?
Well, look, Mr. Mayor, I can't support this motion for simple reason. Because I live close to the school. And I have issue every day with the parents parking on the turf opposite my, my property. It's damaging, damaging, you know, the turf, which has cost me a lot of money. And having said that, like this motion, it's moved by too many council during the local government conferences and defeated. Why am I going to support something like that if no council in New South Wales wants to support it? Do you want me to support such this one and get the people to argue with them every day? Okay? Parking their car on, on my turf? Every day, every day of the same issues, with the people. I put some sticks in front of them, you know?
No, there's a solution.
Well, they don't like, they, they don't care.
There's a solution.
They don't pay. I have no solution, I have no time to put a solution. I'm going to vote against it as simple as that. Thank you.
Don't mess with councillor Hadid's lawn, all right? He's, he looks after it well. So look, can we, can we, all right, can we add a point in this that we allow for a template signage for residents to use, asking for people not to park on the lawn? Oh, not well. It's just a, an example. It's just something in there? Huh? Yeah. It's like, it's like putting a speed limit sign on your bin. It's not an official traffic sign, but it's recommendation. I'll take councillor Amun's happy with that? Yep, thank you. Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? I declare carried. Thank you, I declare the motion carried. Next slide is Plan Zero Three. Can I ask the Deputy Mayor to take the chair, please?
Page seventy-six.
Page seventy-six. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So we're on Plan O Three, page seventy-six, with a recommendation on page seventy-seven. Do I have anyone to move the recommendation?
A question first.
Shall we move it before we ask questions so that we have a motion active? Moved by councillor Rhodes, seconded by councillor Amun. Yes, question, councillor Hall?
I, question wise, would council benefit from a term-based CPI increase on the contributions to prevent the previous shortfall accumulating over a ten-year period? And should this apply to similar greenfield areas such as Austro, Rossmoor, et cetera? Does that make sense? Can you say it again? In, the problems occurred, we've had a ten-year gap. And in that ten-year, our debt or the amount of money collected has decreased considerably by, I believe, twenty, thirty million dollars, could be more. If we did this on a regular basis, instead of waiting ten years to do this, as obviously occurred. So I would suggest that can we do it by an annual, like an annual or biannual? And, and or apply a CPI increase to that figure, which I think would apply. Because, you know, Rhodes and so on that you're using for part of this would, would fit that. Just a question, is that something we should consider?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through the Director of Planning and Compliance.
Thank you, through the acting CEO. Yes, council would benefit from a more regular review. Five years is the industry standard. It takes about two years to complete a review in its entirety. So our aim is for a five-year review. The I Part review itself generates a discussion about the tenure of the next review needing to be much sooner. Now that this review has lifted the cap essentially on the levy for each lot, the CPI will kick in. So it will be a payment on per lot, depending on the CPI at the time of payment. So that is now a benefit of the cap being lifted. Again, we will benefit from that. And yes, in response to your first question, we would benefit from a review that is more frequent than every ten years.
And, and that is happening?
Yes, that's our intention.
Sorry, through the chair?
Yes.
Would it be wise that we basically pay the ninety percent to the people that we're trying to acquire off? And if something does occur, then we move on it that way? Because you've already secured the property at a certain price? Are we able to do that? And if they've got a problem with it, then we go back to that? Or is that too, too much of an?
I, I just wonder if that might be a discussion to have at a governance meeting about, about all of our plans.
All right, yeah, okay. Happy to move that way.
Thank you. So we might, we might discuss that at the next governance meeting. If there are no other questions, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against? I'll declare it carried. Thank you. It's a planning matter, so was that unanimous? Thank you. We'll move on to Plan Zero Four. Plan Zero Four, a planning proposal for Sixty Gurna Avenue, Austro, with a recommendation on page eighty-six. Have someone to move the recommendation?
Happy to move it, but I've also got a question.
Councillor Hall, moved by councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Amun. Question, councillor Hall?
Yes, on that Gurna Avenue, the rezoning, one thing that does concern me a bit is the local planning panel rejected the, the height reduction. I can't understand that. I thought most people would have had a bit more of a, an understanding of why that's being left at, at nine metres instead of fifteen metres. It's an R two zone. If you put fifteen-metre buildings on there, I'm assuming that that would mean you're encroaching R three. So is, am I, have I got it wrong?
Through the CEO.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll revert to the Director of Planning and Compliance.
Thank you, through the acting CEO. I'll ask Luke Ostai, Coordinator of Strategic Planning.
Thank you, through the chair. Yeah, it's rare that the LPP say go higher. That's the first time I've seen that. The reason is, the site originally was to be R three, but then was supposed to be a school, is no longer going to be a school. The proponent's just gone for R two. We've actually checked this with them. The reason is the development standards that sit there are for an R three zoning, but they're asking for an R two zoning. So we're simply saying, we'll give you the same development standards as the other R two areas. Like I said, we checked with the proponent after the LPP meeting and that's the way they wanted to progress. So that's why we've recommended it that way and effectively disregarded that, that minor point of the LPP advice.
Thank you. I, I would have thought that the LPP advice, they would have, would have understood that. They obviously didn't. No, I, I, I agree with it. The other point I had, that, that area there is public school land and there's some issues now, that we're losing public school land. And so I hope council is advocating for, for more public land for schools. That was an issue.
Could I add a point seven along those lines? Thank you, councillor Hall, for raising that. That we could counsel write to the Minister for Education, Prue Carr, reaffirming our commitment as a council to public education. And would, what we'd like to know is working with School Infrastructure New South Wales to ensure that parents in that area are given the choice to send their children to public school and what other land areas that they will acquire to ensure that parents in that area are able to send their kids to a public school. No, that's a little bit long-winded, I know, but. No, that's a little bit long-winded, I know, but.
Checking the, the prescriptiveness of it. I think it looks okay, but let me just, and I'll have to check with the mover in a second to just give me one minute.
Because I think that's really important, that, you know, there, there is a, a lack of public schools in that area.
And certainly the.
Yeah, I, I understand that. That's why, and, and they're disposing of that land, our schools infrastructure, New South Wales. And I guess I'm concerned that what other pieces of land are there in Austro that school infrastructure, New South Wales will ensure that public schools can be built in the area for parents to make that choice.
I thank you for that point. I've a mover and a second are happy with that because I have to say, you know, we have Austro Public School and even the upgrades to Austro Public School, we're way behind before we even start. So thank you for.
Not enough to keep up with the, the population.
Agreed. Thank you for point seven. All right, if there's no further commentary or questions, I'd like to put the motion. All those in favor, against, I'll declare that unanimous. Thank you. Someone like to ask the mayor to come back in if he's out there? I don't, so it doesn't matter. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Comm 01 on page 102 with a recommendation on page 102. Do I have someone? Moved by councillor Green, seconded by councillor Haddid. All those in favor, against, declare it carried. We'll move on to Corp 01, page 110 with a recommendation on page 110. Do I have someone to move that way? Councillor Green, seconded councillor Hull. I'm looking at everybody. All those in favor, against, I declare it carried. Thank you very much. Corp 02, Local Government Enumeration Tribunal, 2023, page 115 with a recommendation on page 115. Somebody to move that way? Councillor Green, seconded councillor Hull. All those in favor, against, declare it carried. Thank you. Corp 04, Investment Report, May 2024, page 119 with a recommendation on page 120. Moved by councillor Rhodes, seconded by councillor Hull. All those in favor, against, declare it carried. Okay, C, Custom Experience and Business Performance, 01, The Audit, Risk and Improvement Committee Charter, page 129 with a recommendation on page 130. Councillor Rhodes? So I just want to have a quick look. We do have another meeting in, yes, we do. So, sorry, let me just have a determine, so we're determining that we will have a non-voting councillor member as part of the recommendation? And councillor Rhodes would like to put yourself forward for that position, correct? Yes, this is, the report suggests that this is just until we get to the election and then it will go. All right, so seconded councillor Goodman, all those in favor, against, declare it carried. City Futures Reports, page 163 with a recommendation on page 164. I'd like to move to defer this item to a governance committee for further discussion and seconded by councillor Green. Excellent. All those in favor, against, declare it carried. It's big and it's complex.
Been put to, to council before in such a fashion.
It's a fabulous report, but I'd like an opportunity to discuss it.
And we, and we also need to look at the, like the costing and all the rest of it. So, um, thank.
Done, thank you. So we have committee reports. Any bottom, move them as a whole? Councillor Green, seconded councillor Goodman. All those in favor, against, declare it carried. And someone like to move that we accept them? Councillor Hull, seconded councillor Goodman. All those in favor, against, or declare it carried. Oh, we are up to Notice of Motion 01, on page 232 with a recommendation on page 233. Councillor Rhodes, would you like to move your motion? Thank you very much. Do you have a second of your motion? Councillor Haddid? Any discussion? All those in favor, against, declare it carried. Okay, Nom 04, which is in the addendum book, page 1189 with a recommendation on page 1190. Councillor Amun, it's in your name. Would you like to move it?
I'd like to move it as per the book and just advise that you probably heard over, over the past week, week and a half, how difficult Community Cafes.
Just let someone second it for you. Seconded by councillor Goodman.
Um, how, how, how difficult they've, they've been doing things and through the generosity of the community and other institutions, they were able to raise some money and if we can continue that going, to give, show them the support, that'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I echo everything that you said. An amazing community group. So if there are no further discussions, can I call all those in favor of the motion? Please raise your hand. Against, I declare it carried. We now have confidential items. I don't, yes. We're deferring that. Yes.
Deputy Mayor? Can we move him as a whole if no one has any issue with any?
We can if we. So this. You can, you can, yes.
I should put my microphone on. This is urgent because the news of this came out after the deadline for notices of motion. And I was hoping the mayor would put up a mayoral minute, but unfortunately that was not the case. So I've, I've, I would like to put it up as a motion of urgency. At the recent King's Birthday Honours, our former mayor Wendy Waller was honoured with an OAM. And as we did for, for.
I support that.
As, as we did when, when former deputy mayor Haddid was awarded an OAM at the beginning of the year, we obviously acknowledged and celebrated that one of our own who has contributed to this organisation for over 30 years and, you know, really steered us through COVID and has contributed to the Liverpool community in many, many ways, as we did for, for councillor Haddid. I, I believe we should also recognise and express our appreciation for former mayor Waller's outstanding service to Liverpool.
Thank you.
Yes, and.
And central letter of congratulations. And I would like to mention that the youth council have also done the same thing. Okay, thank you very much. I will rule that it's urgent. Pardon?
Yeah, but what's, what's the urgency on it? That's all.
There are, there are other residents of Liverpool. I don't have. But if we can prepoint it.
If you can withdraw that and we'll deal with the mayoral minute once it's ready, which would acknowledge this.
Closed session while we're waiting for that? Because I didn't get to that last, sorry, inconfidential? I'm, we could move the things that are inconfidential while we're waiting for the mayoral minute?
Are we saying that there's a reluctance to acknowledge, to acknowledge a former mayor of Liverpool council on, on their own as, as her contribution?
The staff have been working on this during the week.
Right.
There's a mayoral minute that's drafted that includes, and what has the protocol has been is acknowledging all recipients of King's honours and Queen's honours. So it's, there's one that's at the moment that's in draft, includes Wendy and others. It didn't come to this council meeting. I didn't put it up because we weren't sure if that, that included everybody. We just want to double check on some other names to make sure they were all included. So happy if you want to put it up now, we're just, it's just, we're going to get it. So just give us a few minutes.
Is there an issue of putting this up now and then we, you know, when we, information comes to hand about the other recipients, we can move that at the next meeting? Like, I just don't see that as an issue.
It doesn't deem, it's, it's not urgent. You know, so if, if it doesn't, it doesn't mean the threshold of an errancy motion. Microphone. Yeah, yeah, she's going to get it. Yeah, we'll put it now. That's what I'm saying. But we.
Mayor, I was, I was actually going to, you know, when, when the councillors do the presentations?
Yep.
I was going to suggest we do it then. So we could have legally done it then, made a presentation to acknowledge the Lord Mayor, blah, blah, blah. Gee, I shouldn't have said it like that, but never mind.
It's not a law either, but you can say blah, blah, blah.
We, it's, it's normal. And I, with, with these ones, it's always a worry that you, we miss someone, right? And that's what we want, are on the side of caution. But I think if you, if you, when this happens, just as a, take it as a given, if you can just even notify the staff and say, hey, here, we know this person because we don't always know everybody. And then they draft it up automatically. Microphone, please.
While you're preparing the list of all the, the names.
Yep.
So can I move that, deal with the confidential one? I'm happy to move it as a whole. If any one of my colleagues has any issue, he can pull it out.
I'll happy to third it.
All right. So just for clarification, because I don't have my run sheet. Thank you, deputy mayor.
And as a whole, if you have any issue, just.
Two, two, see? So can I just confirm? So all planning is done, all community is done, corporate's done, committees are done?
Yes.
Did we do NOM? NOM 01 and NOM 02? Wow. I'll stay outside more often then, all right? Okay. Conf, so conf, yeah, now, so conf, imagine if I have two more minutes and you guys could have finished this all. So you want to move conf 01, the recycling contract, conf 02, voyage appoint for bridge, conf 03, legal affairs report, conf 04, local planning engagement, additional expert and alternate members. Where's addendum five?
I just have a comfort, a comment in conf 02 that it's very disappointing that, that we've landed up here. That would be my only comment. What can we do? It is what it is.
All right. Just, so just before we go to the conf, we've got the mayoral minute up. So the King's Birthday Honours recognises and celebrates those who make a difference and those who achieve their best and those who serve others. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I'd like to extend congratulations to the following members of our community who were honoured in the 2024 King's Birthday Honours. Miss Wendy Jean Waller, emeritus mayor, I'm sure I think she has that title, awarded the Medal of Order of Australia for her service to local government and to the community of Liverpool. To Mr Paul Howard Warren, awarded the Medal of Order of Australia for her service to the community. And I'd like to move that council, extend congratulations to the CEO of Liverpool who were honoured in the honours. You got some more names?
Sorry, see where you've got previous mayor of Liverpool? She was both mayor and Lord Mayor. So I think I, while I was on council when she ended up getting the Lord Mayor, you sure?
That should probably be added. Sonia Marshall, the current chief executive of the South West Sydney Local Health District, was awarded a public service medal for her services to South West Sydney during COVID.
Mr. Mayor, can we send our little letter to Congress, select all the recipient?
We, we used to, in my previous term, we used to have a little civic reception for them, congratulating them as well. So if we can send them a letter and have a little civic reception for them, that would be greatly appreciated. If there's no further discussion, huh? Then I can do it from the civic budget. I'm sure the director can put on nice tees and scones. Yeah. All those in favor, against, declare it carried unanimously. Thank you. Conf, I didn't get to the conf. I'm, I'm, can we do just one, two and three and skip four for the moment, please? So I'd like to move that we do confidential on one, two and three as a whole. If no one has any issues, seconded councillor Green. Any discussion? All right, this has to be recorded. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Unanimous? I declare the motion unanimous. Yeah, council can even note it, yep. So conf 04. I just go back to previous discussions that we had about this. Is this not the one, is this not the stuff that we said we didn't want to vote on about who goes on the, sits on the independent panel? Yeah, conf four, which? Book, book five. I just want to ask the directors. Yeah. Look, I'd, I'd like to recommend that we defer, that we defer this to see how this is in line with previous motions of council regarding whether it's the decision of the CEO or decision of councillors.
It's just endorse it, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's, it's the minister's.
There's a, there's a, these are a pool of people that are put forward by the, by the staff. Yeah, I'm happy to delegate to the CEO to make these decisions, but this is where we had this debate last time.
No, I guess we did.
Yes, I'm saying. So I think, I don't remember exactly what ended up getting up, but I think it'd be good if we defer it and let the, let the staff look at it from that point of view, just so we're consistent with our decision-making in our resolutions. Second deputy mayor? In discussion, I put the motion. All those in favor? Against, declare that unanimous. Is that it? Nothing? No, the addendum? Addendum of addendum? All right, everyone. Thank you very much. I declare the meeting closed at six o'clock.